One, good evening. July the 11th, 2023, and this is a meeting of the Alamo County Planning Commission. I always say that so those in the audience know with great confidence that they are in the right spot. And if you're not, this is a perfect time to slip one out the door. There'll be no judgment. So. With that, we'll move into our, our, our business here. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in a hybrid meeting are posted on the Alamo County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Alamo County calendar. Participation will include opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. As we look at our agenda here, we have some miscellaneous business, but the agenda is anchored by, one, a presentation which we look forward to from staff and, and our consultant partners here. And then we do have a public hearing, Maple Grove Church, uh, that's here on the docket. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. Mr. Clerk, do you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Missile here, Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Carizano.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here. So as we do have a quorum, are there other matters not listed on the agenda that the public would like to speak to? If so, you're welcome to come up now. So any matters not on the agenda the public would like to speak to? Okay, saying none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Um, before us, we have the draft minutes from June 13th, 2023. It's regular meeting. Is there any commissioner has any edits or, uh, anything they would like to add or alter to that document? Oh, uh, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Claiborne.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So with that being covered, we'll move into our presentation tonight, which is the Community Development Department Fees Restructuring. So with that, I'll ask for the staff's report.
Good evening. Uh, my name is David Shiflett. I'm the Assistant Director of Administration and Community Development. I'm joined here with me tonight by, um, our Special Projects Manager, Amelia McCully, and our esteemed, uh, counterparts with the Berkeley Group, Chris Musso and Darren Coffey. Um, if you may or may not be familiar with Berkeley Group, uh, they're a Virginia-based consulting firm who works with the cities and counties and towns on local government policies and regulations. Um, they have examined our current fee schedule structure, compared and contrasted with benchmark localities and recommended changes based on that evaluation and best practices. For the agenda, we will begin by providing some background to lay a foundation on the fee structure changes in CDD and our goals for the project. Then the Berkeley Group will share their comparative analysis and the study methodology. They will go over best practices on fee schedule structure and the recommendations for our fee restructuring. Lastly, we will then provide an overview of some of the more substantive proposed changes and end with next steps for the project. Uh, we would like to make it through the presentation, um, before we open it up for questions. So for a little bit of background on the project, uh, this project is going to serve several key purposes as well as being uh, consistent with board direction from 2021. Uh, it is also an important step towards facilitating, uh, the implementation of our new community development system, which is the permit and application tracking platform that will eventually replace county view. Uh, the key themes in the fees restructuring project are simplifying and consolidating the fees. The fees will move from three hundred and twelve separate fees into, in six separate code sections into one unified code section. With the staff's recommendation, uh, recommended fee schedule, we will have a hundred and fifty-four total fees. Um, and that's over a fifty percent reduction, about a fifty-three percent reduction in the number of fees currently. The resulting unified fee schedule will be moved to a new county code section that will make it easier to revisit and amend on a regular basis. So for the major amendments in two thousand and seven, uh, consultants named Public Financial Management Group completed a comprehensive study on the county costs for providing services associated with the various applications and permits in the department. Um, the fee ordinance amendments were adopted in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. Uh, our current work, this work does not include a service cost study. Uh, then in two thousand and eight, the board established a policy to update fees based on approved changes to staff compensation. And these updates, while intended to occur every two years, were not routinely completed. Uh, in fact, I believe since two thousand and eight, we updated all the CDD fees together two times. The most recent update to fees was adopted twenty-first April of twenty twenty-one and was effective July first, twenty twenty-one. This included a new technology fee, uh, which is based on four percent of our total application fee, um, based on, uh, Virginia code. Uh, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Chris Musso, planner with the Berkeley Group, who will review their comparative analysis and study conclusions.
Make sure those things working. Good evening, Alamo County Planning Commission. Good to be with you again. It's a pleasure as always. Uh, in case you don't know me yet, uh, my name is Chris Musso. I'm here with Darren Coffey. We're with the Berkeley Group. And for about the last year, we've been working on helping your CDD staff update their fee structure and create a new unified fee schedule. Now, the scope of this project did not include an examination of the current fee costs. This was strictly based on structure alone. So we went into this project with an intention to maintain revenue neutrality within that two percent base mark. So we didn't go higher or lower than two percent of what your, your current fees are. There were chances or opportunities where, where we needed to combine fees together, and in which case we tried to maintain that revenue neutrality at all times. Uh, it was a rigorous process to maintain this, especially with the building residential building fees, which we'll talk about later on in the pro, in the presentation. Major aspect of this project was benchmarking. We chose seven localities with similar sizes and development patterns to Alamo County, similar counties that have been used in the past, and we chose those with the help of CDD staff. Benchmarking of these locality fee charges was avoided where possible. We're looking only at a snapshot comparison of the structure of these benchmarks and not their actual cost of fees. The overall goal here of the project was to simplify and streamline this and, and create a new schedule based on the best practices throughout Virginia. In total, we found that Alamo Marl was doing a lot of things correct, um, especially residential and, and commercial building fees based on square footage. Um, that was a best practice. And what we wanted to do was just kind of find the things that Alamo Marl could improve upon and streamline those processes. So we go to the next slide here. So this is a list of the data sources that we used. As I said, uh, the benchmark localities fees was the, the key component here. Uh, but in addition, we use readily available data sources, uh, especially to create residential building fees based on home prices, mean and median home prices versus original income patterns. Um, that's to help reduce the barriers to entry into the home markets. And most importantly, we engage with the community where possible. We'll talk about that, uh, on the next slide here. As far as outreach goes, uh, we had two stakeholder groups, Blue Ridge Home Builders and Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable, or better known as CADRE. CDD staff did meet with Blue Ridge Home Builders and drafts throughout the process were shared with both BHRB and CADRE. We were looking for their input via email pretty much the entire time. In addition, we compiled a community survey for Engage Alamo Marl. The draft fees were shared with over twenty-seven hundred community members that had gone through the development process in the past. They were directly shared, uh, our drafts and asked to, to respond via the survey. Of those over twenty-seven hundred, we got sixteen survey responses, which is low, but, uh, in my experience, when people don't have anything to say, it's usually a good thing. So we see that as a positive. The general feedback that we did get from those responses is positive. People are excited that we're simplifying things, that we're reducing the complexity, complexity of the fees. Some of the comments were, um, associated with help, helping to reduce the, the, helping enhance clarity and transparency with some of the fee categories, but we addressed most of those and they are, um, updated in the current draft that you have. So we'll talk about, we'll go into what we found here with the next slide and go over a couple of charts real quick. So this slide shows the comparative analysis with the benchmark localities. Uh, on the far left side there is the current Alamo Marl County fees, and what stands out the most, um, is that they are a lot higher, a lot more categories than the other benchmark localities by a, a large margin in some, some portions. If you look at zoning there, a hundred and forty-one fee categories for zoning. The next highest there is the city of Charlottesville at thirty-nine. Um, so one of our big goals here was to try and reduce some of those categories. Uh, and we achieved that on the far right-hand side. Column, you'll see what our proposed current draft numbers are. Um, it's a reduction in about fifty-three percent in fee categories overall. And again, this helps simplify things and streamline things. Um, rolling fees into one another where they, where they made sense to do so and, uh, reduce the amount of redundancies throughout. I'm going to the next slide here. Again, this chart just goes to highlight, um, how many fee categories Alamo Marl County really had. These pie charts kind of break them down and show you that they are a large portion of the pie. Uh, these are the current fees, not the proposed. The slide also talks about all the best practices that we were keeping in mind as we created this new schedule. Uh, and these are things that, that we wanted to highlight and, and keep using going forward in addition to mirroring what some of the benchmark localities were doing. A lot of these things we believe, um, have been addressed or will be addressed. But it's always good to review them, and we recommend the Alamo Marl reevaluate the new schedule a year after adoption, um, to ensure its performance, maintain these best practices. Touch the next slide here. So again, this just shows the amount of fee categories, um, existing versus our proposed and how much we've come down. Overall, we think that these changes have helped reorganize, consolidate, remove redundancies, and simplify the fee categories for Alamo County. Uh, in addition, they're all going to be in one place. This will create a brand new chapter of the county code. Um, very simple to go in and change that on an annual or biannual basis. The adoption of this, we're expecting to be in simultaneously with the new CDS permitting system. And, uh, hopefully the combination of those two will really help address these changes and, uh, make for an easier system for you and your community members. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dave, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Um, well, next we'd like to go over our, um, our, our top, top five proposed changes. And so first of all, we'd like to go over the bundled and tiered single-family residential fee structure. Um, you know, and, and to consolidate and simplify fees, we propose building fees for building permits for single-family residential applications into different categories or separate tiers based on the size of the home, the gross square footage. Uh, and, and, and this effort is supported as one of the recommended best practices for, for the fee schedules. Um, single-family residential fees were chosen because they are a frequent billing permit type, um, and more conducive to bundling fees. Commercial permits, um, we looked at those while important, are fewer in number and far more complex based on, uh, the Berkeley Group's feedback and assessment, uh, their current fees, um, are quite transparent and fair. In the current, uh, fee schedule, the single-family residential building permit fees are based on three separate calculations. So try and follow me into this one here. It's fifty-eight cents per square foot for finished space plus eighteen cents per square foot for unfinished space plus five cents per gross square foot minus the area of unfinished basement. And this is for the, for the plan review. The bundled fee applied across all types of square footages. It includes the building plan review and the first two inspections per inspection type. Determining the tiers for these bundled fees involved extensive assessment and data modeling to assure the proposal is, uh, is revenue neutral and that it does not represent substantial changes from the current fees paid. The proposed fees were tested against single-family burnt, uh, building permit applications received since July first, twenty twenty-one to evaluate the expected revenues with adoption of the updated fee schedule. The proposed tiers recognize that larger homes require more extensive plan review and inspection time than smaller homes. We are proposing six tiers of bundled fees as listed in the staff report based on the house size, um, and you can refer to attachment C. Next, uh, newspaper and mail notice requirements. The increasing cost of postage and advertising in newspaper have, uh, quite exceeded our current fees. Uh, to better address these costs, we propose the fee paid for notices be changed to the actual cost for the advertisement, when an advertisement is applicable, and the actual cost of the postage for mailings. The initial application fee will include a standard administrative fee for the notice, and the actual cost for the notice will be charged following the mailings and prior to, uh, the issuance of related permits. Uh, this approach does not allow complete predictability, uh, for the fee, but it is recommended by the staff as the best way to capture these costs. Uh, next, the merger of multiple fee categories for a single flat fee. So to be consistent with best practices, uh, fee categories have been combined and the overall number of fee categories reduced. Uh, and we can include a couple of examples here. Mul, A, multiple tenant fees involved in a single application are combined into one fee category. An example of this, uh, with the Virginia Erosion and Sediment Control, uh, where the agreement or plan review is one fee and the permit and inspection are a separate fee. These are proposed to be combined into one fee. And then example B, multiple separate fee categories are combined into one category. For example, where there are twenty existing fee categories for special use permits, five fee categories are proposed. Uh, for fee consistency, where we have found inconsistencies in existing CDD fees, we have sought to establish a common fee where relevant uh, fees for transactions relating to performance bonds and for appeals of decisions under the regulations are two, um, two examples of proposed changes to establish consistency. And lastly, uh, rounding to the nearest dollar, uh, as a result of fee increases over time, some resulting fees included dollars and cents, for example, a hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents for a letter of revision or uneven numbers such as five hundred and ninety-two dollars for a variance application for the Board of Zoning Appeals or two hundred and thirty-seven dollars for an easement plat. Now, we, uh, we propose a fee schedule round fees to the nearest dollar, ending in a zero or a five. Incidentally, we've noticed there are two fees that didn't get rounded, uh, which we caught after the fact. Uh, we will review the schedule for rounding and other quality control as we, uh, continue. Next steps for us is a work session, uh, with the Board of Supervisors on August sixteenth. And following their input, uh, we'll schedule public hearings with the commission and board, uh, this fall, uh, late fall and early winter. Uh, staff recommends an effective date, uh, for these new fee schedule, uh, of July first, twenty twenty-four. This later effective date both allows CDD time to make the necessary changes to our information systems and limits cost impacts on contracts for development that are underway. And with that, uh, I would like to open it up to the commission for questions.
Oh, great. Thank you. Very informative, and thank you for the, the efforts put forth in, in the presentation here. Um, I'll start to my right with Commissioner Murray, was work away around the, the dais and Commissioner Murray, do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, um, and looking at the, um, bundled and tiered single-family residential fee structure, it, it looks like the highest tier is seventy-five hundred, uh, square feet. Um, did you do an analysis of how many homes in Alamo Marl currently fa, fall into the different categories? And then also, I'm just curious, how many homes are above seventy-five hundred square feet and? And what is, what are the, like, what's the largest home in Alamo County? What, how many square feet is that? And so, because it seems like in, with, before, where we were charging based upon, um, square, square feet. If you had a super large mansion, that would be paying a lot more money. And we'd just be rolling all that cost into the other categories now. Um.
So the, it's kind of tough to compare, uh, because it, you automatically compare to current fees and the comparisons aren't quite apples to apples in that regard. Um, because the current fees are based on the three separate calculations and these are based on bands. To your first question, um, the seventy-five hundred should be seventy-five hundred plus. So anything over seventy-five hundred, not, not just.
Correct, right. Correct, but so I mean, like, how many? How many do we have over, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, you know? Um, how many do we have over, you know? It just seems like there's a lot of potential homes that could be above seventy-five hundred square feet in Alamo County. I just wonder how many of those are, and then what's, what's the strength, what's the? What's the mean there? So there been analysis of how many homes there are in those, in that category?
Amelia McCully, Special Projects, uh, Manager. So we ran the numbers many different ways, and the percentage of homes that fall into the over seventy-five hundred square feet is a very small number. In terms of like how large the houses get, I can't tell you off the top of my head, um, we, we worked with lots of different data sets to try to get the most accurate numbers we could for revenue projections and to also compare to the existing fees. Um, so we weren't really tuned into how big the house gets. We were really looking at existing costs versus proposed costs. And I, I would have to search for that data set, um, but it's a, it's a smaller number than you think that's over seventy-five hundred square feet.
Thanks.
Anything else, Commissioner Murray? Mr. Firehawk? No? Mr. Missile?
Uh, yeah, thanks for the presentation. That was really helpful, uh, really, really well done. Couple of questions. One, under, um, this is an example, under agricultural and forestal districts, we talked about recommending eliminating the fee to create or to add to the district and maintaining the fee for withdrawal from the district. So that's a little bit of a value judgment there, kind of like it's better to add than to. Or did you consider any discounts? And maybe it's in here and I missed it, or any incentives for affordable housing? For fees related to affordable housing?
You ask a really important question because it's on everybody's mind and it's so important for us to, to have it on our mind. Um, and as we spoke with Jody about it, we talked about the fact that that is something sort of in the future toolkit for the affordable housing work, and they, I don't think they had gotten to the point where they were ready to recommend developers incentives or, because it, it might go along the lines of what you're talking about, which is some kind of a credit basis. So, um, while that's a really important worthwhile undertaking, we didn't feel that we could take that on with this work right now.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I know there's a workshop tomorrow and that actually up at North Fork on incentives, developer incentives for.
The, the value judgment.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 it's okay. It was actually not a question, but that's, that's, I was kind of, well, perfect. Awesome. Awesome. Let the record show that I asked that question.
And, and clearly this is going to need to be a board policy-driven decision, and we'll bring it up with the work session next month. Um, as we went through this work and we looked at the fact that, uh, we're charging both to establish a district or add to a district, which is something that we want to encourage, um, as well as to withdraw from a district. Um, I, and Berkeley Group may want to speak to it. They, I think they raised the question of why don't we consider dropping the fee for what we're trying to promote? And, and that is what we agreed would be a good thing to do and pose to the board.
Thank you. Um.
Might have something to add to.
Really, I mean, it's, if the comprehensive plan says you're trying to preserve, you know, the rural character of the county, you're not talking about massive exodus of AFDs anyway. So it just seemed like with all of these philosophically, it's like, how can we remove barriers unintended or otherwise? And so, you know, if, if you want to remove it, then, you know, there's a process. If you want to add it, then, you know, come, come at it and you don't have to pay it, even though it's, it's not really a barrier. So. Um, and if I could, just with the categories, that is such an important part of this project. We say it's a best practice, but honestly, I think we've created a model that, uh, you don't see, uh, anywhere else that I'm aware of. It's an idea that we had and that Jody had, and, and Dave and Amelia, and we hashed it out together, started out with four categories, ended up with six. There aren't a ton over seventy-five hundred. There are some that are very big, ten plus, but not a lot. What we were looking at, and the reason we ended up with six is because we were trying to, you know, how many buckets do you need to make this fair? And you're not overburdening any one category. And what is revenue neutral? And how do you achieve that revenue neutrality within each category? Then what does that fee look like once it's rounded? Um, and so CDD staff, I'll just say, they spent hours and hours and hours fighting with the system to extract the data to be able to do that, and they did an excellent job. And when you look at that, it looks very simple. What I like to tell people is, simple is very complex. Simple is not easy. And so when it looks simple, it looks like we just pick numbers out of the sky, is all data-driven. And with those six categories, um, where we lowered barriers to housing was below twenty-five hundred square feet and below fifteen hundred square feet. Those fees are less than they were, um, I believe, um, initially. And then where the bulk of housing is, which is twenty-five hundred and up, um, you know, we, we mitigated that as well. So it was really an art that I think was well done, uh, by county staff and not by us. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that, um, a lot of complexity that went into that.
Sure. Could you say your name one more time? Thank you.
Sorry, Darren Coffey with the Berkeley Group.
Thank you, and thank you for the response.
Thanks. One, you mentioned preserving um, revenue neutrality, I think. And I'm curious, and, and the dollar, dollar, um, figures were not benchmarked as part of this. It was more about the, the number. I'm just curious, is there an idea or is there a plan to benchmark where the revenue um, versus expense balance is? And if that then results in increased fees down in, down the line, or is is it, is everyone pretty comfortable with where they are now?
So with, that is, uh, something that does need, need to be done. We don't, we have not planned that yet, but that'll probably be in another iteration of fee study.
Got it.
And if I could just add on to that, um, there are going to be some changes coming down the pike that may make us more efficient and reduce process, therefore reduce the cost of the service. The CDS system, the zoning modernization, you know, so it doesn't make sense to do it now and then have to redo it right after, since those are right up on the horizon about to be implemented.
Yeah, the reason I asked was you, we referred to under building inspections proposing a new fee for unique inspections. And so that's sort of tied to the fact that bridges and other structures will take a lot longer than something else. So therefore there's got to be a. So that, that does impact dollar amounts, and I was curious if that was somehow envisioned in the future. And then just one clarification and the reason for my question about, um, the agricultural and forestal districts and, and the affordable housing was you mentioned in your statement that we want to continue to preserve the rural character of Alamo County. And so that translated into a, a, an agricultural and forestal district approach. We also want to enhance affordable housing in Alamo County, and that doesn't seem to translate into the fee categories for residential. So that's where I was just seeing a disconnect, but I understand Ms. McCully, what you're saying there too. So just want to make that point. That's it. Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. Very concise and to the point. Um. Could, could you go to the benchmarking slides where you had the pie charts and the, actually the, um, yeah, the benchmark where you had the multiple? Uh, I think, yeah, right here. Okay. So so obviously we were significantly, um, outside the norm, right, in the number of, if I, I'm reading this correct. Huge improvement, right? You cut it in, in, in half. But I'm wondering, I mean, I'm still looking, we're still on the high end, right, of, of most of these. So I'm wondering if there's still opportunities. I think you're talking about further simplifications, maybe next steps. So is that something you're seeing in the next iteration where this could continue to move in the right direction of simplifying?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is just kind of the start of continual improvement, um, along with the, uh, community development system implementation, which will hopefully drive, uh, additional process improvement. Um, I, I think we could see, you know, additional, um, reduction in number of fees or fee categories.
And, and so when you're benchmarking, I mean, there's some of these have, uh, you know, and RICO in ninety-three and had over sixty-three, Roto, which, you know, really growing sixty-six. So I'm just wondering, when you were benchmarking them, what, what were they doing that they were getting down to those? Those numbers?
So this is a very interesting project for a lot of different reasons, but one of the reasons is because when you start looking for commonalities among these communities, which have a lot of commonalities, there aren't any with the fee categories. There are very few. I mean, it is a Rorschach test. They're all over the place. It's crazy. It's, you really have to suss out what is going on and what is not going on. For some of these localities, they're not sophisticated enough. They're not as sophisticated as they should be, in my opinion. Uh, and others, there's just a, a massive, you know, amount of complexity that doesn't have to be there. The trick with Almaral was consolidating without losing anything, right? Um, and so we feel like we've done all we can do with this iteration. But this also sets the foundation so that the next iteration of this exercise isn't going to be nearly as, as difficult. There's so much going on within those twelve hundred, with those, it feels like twelve hundred, there's three hundred and twelve fees that it's hard to, you know, uncross your eyes when you stare at it for, for long enough and, and say, okay, you know, have we missed anything? And have we left anything out? Have we done all we can do to get it down as simple as we can without losing the nuances? Um, what is the difference between these fees? Why are the fees different? They shouldn't be different. They should be different. All of those value judgments that went into this. So. Yeah. Once this is adopted, I can confidently say that Almaral County will have the best fee schedule that I've seen. As a professional working with land use and community development departments in over twenty-eight years. The bar is also low, but I mean, hey.
Thank you. Can you go to the pie charts? So yeah, I was trying to, to spend a little bit of time, look at this and trying to understand them. So the so the pie charts represent, so we're looking at building, let's say. So Albemarle County is three. And so you're aggregating, so the, the whole pie represents the totality of all the counties. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what it, what exactly what that means. When you're looking at these building or WPO or subdivisions, I mean, I.
Yeah, that's just a combination of the last chart that we were on. It's just adding up all of those fees together into one pie. And then who's got the majority of those section? And then the numbers in there are just the rankings of it. So in, in.
So if they were all the, so if the pie is a totality of all your fees, so that's why I first started reading this. But but you're, it's, it's of each of the different counties.
Right. It's just, it's based off of that last chart in the last, um, slide.
So all the building fees of the benchmark. Add up to the pie.
Correct.
And so Almaral County was
third in building as far as count of fee categories in, in building, based on those benchmark localities. Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you. Yeah.
I have one more question. So when you talk about this being revenue neutral, is it going to be revenue neutral for each of those categories? Or is it going to be just revenue neutral in terms of the whole budget? For example, in terms of the WPO, is the anticipated revenue for WPO fees going to stay the same? Um, or is that going to be, or is overall the budget, is that going to be revenue neutral? And, and how might that affect departmental funding as for various programs?
Okay. I don't want to speak for Dave or anything like that, but yes, basically everything should maintain a two percent revenue neutrality across the board. Uh, in an ideal world, um, again, we encourage you to reevaluate in a year after adoption to make sure that that stays true and to make sure that, that this is doing what it's supposed to be doing. Um, but that was the intent going forward. And Dave is welcome to add on and, but hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, thanks.
I, I'm sad that there was no social engineering going on with this. We didn't lessen building for more and zoning or any of that. It's too, we tried to keep it flat everywhere and just consolidate in each of those subcategories as a whole.
Just a quick, before you, before you sit down, just a quick follow-up question on the, on the charts. And thank you, by the way. So you clarified quite a bit for me. So this is all current data.
Correct.
Based on current data.
Yes, the proposed is not in that chart.
So do you have what, so, I'm sorry, the proposals, right? It's not on this chart. Do, do you have a proposed? So what, what does it begin to look like when you, to visualize?
I might. You're, so you're looking for a ranking for the, the proposed, like where, where does Almaral rank now among the benchmark localities?
Right. So the proposed changes, what, what, what would that then generate?
So that's going to be in, uh, in your report and page fourteen. It's not actually in a chart form, unfortunately, but the actual, um, rankings are there. So first, third, third.
Fourteen is just a conclusion. There's no rankings.
Oh, is it page thirteen then? My, uh, my PDF numbers might be off. I apologize. It's page thirteen. Yes, sir. Sorry. So if you see in that chart, it's that left-hand, second, second column there. Um, and in total, Almaral falls from being first to being fifth for all development fees, um, as far as the rankings.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I'll stand up here too.
Mr. Bivens?
So one of the first things I would do is I would suggest that you, that you label those so that the supervisors see that easily. So if, if we've got some individuals here. It should be up there. So that, so if you have, because when it says best practices, one, that one sort of assumes that that's after your work. As opposed to it being the state today. And I, and I do think it's sort of, it's, it's, it would be helpful to have the state today versus what we're suggesting you go to in that kind of visual. Because you've got several professionals up here who this is what they do. And if they're asking you those kinds of questions, you just should be prepared for that.
Sure, absolutely.
And so let me just ask a couple of things. So in page three, where you're talking about the bundling. And you say we're proposing six tiers of bundled fees. I agree. It's good that it's down. But I would, I will be putting onto the record here that I think they should be even fewer. And I think it, and I, and I, and I'm going to add to, on addition to this, and to follow up with what my colleague Fred has said. So I think if we're really trying to say that we're trying to make this a community that has a diversity of housing types in it, then we really still are pitching to. And if we look at some of the data that comes out on a weekly basis from our real estate people, we really see that the basic house around here is about a three thousand square foot house that's being built today. And so that's still pitching, pitching us to about a four sixty-five hundred thousand dollar house, which pitches us to a whole group of people, good, bad, or indifferent. I'm making no value judgment. And so I think that when we talk to the supervisors, the supervisors say, what's the barrier to entry of things? Okay. Everyone has heard me say, I think there should be a different kind of examination about who gets to put their, their, their land into ag forestal. I think that should be a decision that the county makes because the county is making an implicit decision on its revenues. When they allow someone to opt into that without some consideration by the county. And so I have an issue with that. I shouldn't be able to self, to, to sort of purposely put myself in a, in a lower tax basis just because I have X amount of land. I would like to also see us do something about land trust that may not be here. But land trust also is an indicator and it's a signal by the county that it's trying to create a parcel of land that will be forever affordable. That may come up, that may come up in our, in, in our comp plan, but I, what I, what I'm trying to say is that fees push business responses. And if this is something that we're, that we're, we're sort of gathering ourselves to do, then let's be intentional and broad and be diverse. And how we do that, one of the things I wanted to ask here is under one is, is this for new or is this also for renovation? So if I, if I build a, a, build a house at thirty-five hundred square, thirty-five to forty, forty-five hundred and pay two thousand. But I take an existing thirty-five hundred square foot house and put another three thousand on it, which is a lot of what we see going on in this community. All you have to look and see is the, is, is the, the builders here special. There's a, there's a certain group of builders here that specialize renovating up. Uh, you can quote me on that. That's a new, that's a new term of our renovating up. And so if I go from a three thousand square foot house, so I'm now to go to my colleague at the end, I've now got something that's over seventy-five hundred. What am I being charged for? Or am I not being charged at all?
It would be based on what, what it is today. You're only getting charged on what you're building.
So I'm only going to be charged for three thousand, even though I'm, I'm creating a seventy-five hundred square foot house.
Right. Well, it, and it doesn't matter if you paid for three thousand.
When I purchased it.
And then another three thousand later, you're still covering that fee over the long haul.
Well, usually what people are doing is they're buying older houses and then converting. Okay. So that's a piece there that, that sort of, that sort of puzzled me that I get a free ride to a larger house. Even though it's now, I'm not going to build a new house because it's, I like the property I'm on. I'm just going to build a bigger house on that piece of property. And that's fine.
Mr. Bivens, can I just ask a question? But wouldn't they have already paid the fee the first time for the first three thousand?
It would have been built into, it would have been built into their purchase price. But, but what we actually do see here is a number of people buying smaller houses and then retrofitting and then, and then fitting them up for a lot and doing, doing significant additions on them.
Right. But somebody got the permit to build that house and they paid some fee for the first three thousand.
I agree.
And then someone else comes along and they're paying for the next.
I agree. I'm just being explicit and trying to get.
Just want to be clear, it got paid some, at some.
It got paid when, when you first did the first dirt shovel. Yeah. So I'm just trying to figure this out here. The other thing that I would, that I would ask is so the Commonwealth of Virginia isn't, is a, is an unusual place in the way its jurisdictions sit, much like Massachusetts. We're the only, we're the, we're, oh, and I guess Kentucky is, is in this thing, a Commonwealth. We're the one of the few places that has, you know, sort of these cities and that are surrounded by counties and they're have different ways in which they can go about doing things. And so while I appreciate that the benchmarks, the benchmark cities you used, were all in the Commonwealth of Virginia, at some point I might suggest that you give a broader look at the kind of cities that we're looking at. Because people aren't, there's just not, there's not this sort of ad hoc, let's move to Charlottesville, Almaral anymore. People are being drawn here for sort of a character or a sort of quality of life or characteristics that they like here. And so, you know, I'd want to know what happens in Ann Arbor. I want to know what happens in Boulder. I'd want to know what happens in Ithaca, New York. Places that look similar to this community and how people come back to it. As opposed to, I'm not really concerned about, uh, the Hanover or what was the other one that I was looking at? It's like, well, that's really nice, but that's, their economy is not built like ours. And so as we're looking at at, people are, people are really liberal in the places that they can go to build houses. I would want us to have some sense of what are we competing with? You know, what kinds of communities that we're competing. So my question, I started, I started looking at your, at your, at your, at your form and said, would I really, are these really competitive mark, are these really competing markets? So am I really going to go, what I really think about if I'm going to move to Almaral? What I really think about going to Hanover County? Well, I don't necessarily think I would. First of all, it's off a ninety-five and even though I like tomatoes, that's not a reason for me to go to a truck farming community. Would I really go, um, I might go to James County because Williamsburg is a really, is an interesting kind of place. And there's some interesting things I think that do kind of follow how we're, how they've developed out, how we're developing out. And so I would just sort of ask that as you refine this, that you look at communities that, that sort of compete on a profile basis. Because some of these, while they're in the Commonwealth of Virginia, I don't actually think that Almaral competes with them.
So this is a good slide to, to just address that. The best practices, you know, I, I was actually in charge of that part of the project and I looked nationwide at what I felt were best practices in communities, you know, all around the country. Um, larger, smaller, whatever, just, you know, whatever, th- those bullets were derived from what I saw that I liked that I thought knew were best practices based on my experience and based on good land use planning practices. But nobody in Virginia, in my experience, no localities care what another community in Colorado or California are doing. The question they ask is always, what are other Virginia locality similar to us doing? And so for the fee categories, for that critical analysis, it needs to be an apples to apples. And when you start doing other states and there are numerous commonwealths in the country, there's only one that has independent cities and that's us. It's apples to apples. It has to be apples to apples and not apples and oranges and bananas. And that's what you would get with, with a category comparison outside of Virginia. But best practices, you betcha. Um, we don't have rights to it and we don't necessarily do it that well. So I just wanted to add that.
Here's where I'm going to gently push back on you on this. When we look at the individuals who are relocating to our county, they are in fact making national and sometimes international decisions. And when we have people here who are building in some of the, the, um, the more refined building that takes place here, they're making decisions that come here and to build from often the Northeast where we all know what some of the building practices and the building expenses are there. So I think even if it's at a footnote that you looked at places across the, across the, across the nation, I think it would help me to be, to articulate to my supervisor that it's just not that collection of counties, which some of them are not comparable to Almaral County. This is as far as the housing stock, the income profiles, the things that I looked up to see, where do these counties range? As far as at medium housing and what are the, what is sort of the, the median household income in some of those places? So I would just give you a recommendation as you prepare this for the supervisors that you drop a note that you did look nationally at back for your best practices, but did then focus on the data that came from, from the Commonwealth.
Yeah, I'd say in addition, I think it'd be impossible to find anywhere that's like Almaral, really, to, to, to come up with a comparison. You mentioned Ithaca, New York. I'm from the Finger Lakes. I grew up in the Finger Lakes. Ithaca is, is beautiful and I think there are a lot of the same values. But I, if I wanted to, I could go buy a house in Ithaca, New York right now. I don't think I could afford a house in Almaral County. Um, so it's really difficult to, to find an exact match. Uh, and we certainly did the best. I, I believe that had some of the best comparisons in the state, um, for similar development growth patterns. And more thinking to as, to what Almaral might look like in the future. We don't want to just focus on what Almaral is now. We want to focus on where Almaral is headed and, and look at a benchmark locality that uh, idealizes the values that you want to try and achieve and the development patterns that you want to try and achieve.
I would suggest you, and you amplify that in your, in your introduction.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a good note.
Because what you just said broke apart a bunch of the clouds that I felt like, why are we dealing with, with these disparate counties? When we are in fact, do not consider ourselves, um, a parochial county.
That's a good note. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a quick follow-up, uh, because I, I got some clarity as well, when we're talking about the best practices and your benchmarks for those versus the qual, the, so, so the qualitative benchmarks versus the quantitative benchmarks. I think this actually is two slides. I, 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 I don't think this is one slide. But anyway, I'll leave that up, up to you, up to you.
I agree.
Yeah. Cause I don't think best practice is not actually representative of everything that we're looking at there, right? So anyway.
Let's get down. Thank you.
I agree. I, I do have a clarifying question based on what I've heard. Um, so if I had to say a twenty-five hundred square foot house and I did a complete gut job, significant renovation that would require a permit, you don't pay again?
Oh, you're getting into building stuff now and I'm, I'm not a building official. I was a zoning official in a previous life. Um, but maybe, oh, maybe.
Best, but if you're renovating, those fees didn't, we didn't monkey with those.
We didn't change, correct. We did not change the fees for alterations. I mean, if it's a complete tear down and rebuild, they're probably gonna charge you the new single family.
Not, not a tear down though. I'm sorry. Like within the shell.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, those fees really weren't recommended to change.
Right.
Okay. I just thought I heard something different earlier. I thought it sounded like it was free is what it sounded like.
No, 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 no. There's nothing that's free. That would not be within a two percent tolerance. Free is not within a two percent tolerance.
That's what maybe come out.
And, and I think, you know, the, the new CDS system isn't gonna be a fantasy about any stretch of the imagination. But it, you are going to be, to do a data analysis a whole heck of a lot easier than these guys were able to do with this. And so I think, you know, once you have that system put in place in twenty twenty four and you can get to like twenty twenty six and look at two years of that data and go, okay, can we consolidate these six categories into four? Yes, probably. Um, but you know, you've got proffers and you've got, there's so many different nuances that in order to just get it better and to, to help cater to the residential housing market, which is so vital and important to this community, you're simplifying that and doing it in a way that's fair. And it lowers barriers to entry for smaller houses. That's what we were really going for. So this is not perfect. Nothing ever is. It's more perfect. And it will, it will lay the foundation for a much easier process down the road to make it even more fine tuned and perfect. If that makes sense.
Well, well said. Well, I, I totally get that. Um, I do have one more question.
That's why I keep having my phone in my hand. I don't do the notepad. I take notes. So thank you for all your comments.
Absolutely. You're fine. Uh, I do have one question, a couple of comments. Um, understanding that the, the fee schedule is based off of home size as well. I think that's certainly appropriate. But does it bless you? Does it take into consideration like complexity in terms of like types of space or materials? Cause I could, just because it's a big house doesn't mean it's more complex, right? I could do a, you could have a geothermal system, for example, which might require more inspections and so forth. So just curious if you could talk to that.
No, there are building fees that, um, are, are based off the price of the actual house itself and, and. Sorry. Um, we opted to go in for this, this simpler approach because that can get very complex. As the example that Dave showed you of your, your current, um, building fees, there's like a lot of equations and there's this. It makes a lot of work for staff and it makes for a lot of, of, not a lot of transparency for developers. Which is again, goes to that reduction of, of barriers and trying to make things a bit simpler and streamline. That was our objective in this. So we opted not to go with that approach.
Yeah, I, I'm just flagging that because we know that, you know, climate action, for example, is really vital. Right? And our comprehensive planning and everything that we're working towards. And so you could see more complex systems come our way and the way it's, it's written, it kind of ignores that. And so you might just wanna at least acknowledge that, hey, we realized that. And I guess another question would be, maybe this is for staff. Do our fees take into consideration, I think, the continuous training and upskilling of our inspectors? As we see more complex systems coming our way?
You are so tuned in to a very important issue and, um, I'm, I'm not. A lot of the training for building inspectors is free through the state, through the state surcharge. They don't pay a penny for it. But as far as new energy code and new this, that and the other, you know, there are increasing demands on any building inspector for training and certification to meet today's needs with the building construction. It, it's hard enough to hire them. We're trying to find ways, you know, to hire them, keep them and keep them trained. So I, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know if there's a, a practice in other localities that Darren's seen that works.
Well, a couple of things. First, to your other point, I, I had, uh, Dave put this comparative analysis back up. You'll see on building, it goes from seventy eight to fifty eight. That's the least amount of reduction by category. And the reason is because there are so many different specialty fees or things that you mentioned that are complex. We didn't mess with those fees other than the rounding part. Um, those categories, you know, aren't easily collapsed. And perhaps they could be upon further examination. But anyway, that's above my pay grade in a lot of ways. I'm a land use planner and I, I have all the respect in the world for building inspectors and building officials. So that is, that is preserved. So you, you have a fancy house with a lot of different, uh, upgrades and inspections. You're paying for each of those inspections above and beyond the base fee. Look at those six categories is the base building permit fee. Anything else is still gonna be above and beyond.
Okay.
Um, it, for example, it includes two inspections. Pass those two base inspections, you're paying per inspection. So do it right once and you can just pay the base fee. Otherwise you're gonna get tagged for the time. The county, uh, board, um, in its previous work basically authorized adjustments to the fees to help cover costs due to things like salary adjustments. And I would say training costs should play a part of that as well. Um, Albemarle County's Community Development Department does not recover a, a lot of their expenses based on their fees. Um, it, it is lower than, uh, in my experience, uh, in the industry. And so that's work that probably needs to be done down the road as well. But again, get a new system in place, get a new fee schedule in place. So let, let, let things settle out just a little bit, um, and then start talking about, uh, you know, the, how, how do we do a better job with revenue recovery? You, you drive those costs down. Amelia, uh, mentioned earlier, that's part of the equation. It's becoming more efficient and effective. But then you get into the, the conversation down the road of who should be paying for this, right? The taxpayer or the applicant?
All right. Uh, does anyone else have any last final words and?
Yeah, I, I have one, one more question. So, um, looking at, um, page, sorry, my eyes can read this moment. Anyway, the water protection fees and, and it looks like there's a fee that was rolled into the, the, um, overall fee for V S M P for review of mitigation plan pertaining to land disturbing activity in a stream buffer. So I'm curious as to why that was rolled up into a general fee when it's something we're trying to discourage. But construction record drawings review was not. It seems like it would make more sense to take the general thing that everyone has to do, roll that into the fee. But then take the thing that we're trying to discourage and leave that as a separate fee.
So I, I will say that, um, this has gone through a lot of iterations. And this most recent draft has been seen by county staff and, and been revised allow by the county engineer who directly deals with, uh, stormwater management. Um, and I think that was, that change was based upon his recommendation, his or her recommendation. Um, I can certainly look into that and find out why that recommendation was made. And, and we can change it if it needs to be changed, um, or, or get that question answered for you. But I don't have the answer at, at this moment.
Yeah, I, it's above my pay grade as well. You know, environmental engineering, God bless them and kudos. Um, we, the county engineer was asked to help us look at it so we didn't muck it up. And to simplify it as much as it made sense, but not to oversimplify it so that it messed up what he or she is doing. I think it's, it's a heat. But, um, yeah, uh, we, we can look into that more. But it was at the recommendation of the professional with the county and not us.
And if I could just answer that, and Frank can certainly pipe in if there's, uh, more to say on a technical basis than what I'm gonna explain here. This is a case where under V E S C P, erosion sediment control, there's a hundred and seventy dollar fee for review of a mitigation plan. Under Virginia Stormwater Management Program, there's a hundred and seventy dollar fee for review of a mitigation plan. So we just combine them into one fee category. You don't need two separate fee categories for the same fee.
Correct. But I see other V S M P, um, items that were not rolled into a single fee. Um, for example, the construction record drawings review, which seems like something that would always have to be done. Whereas the, um, review of a mitigation plan pertaining to land disturbance activity within a stream buffer was, was rolled in. So it seems like out of those two, if I was to find something that would, that I would roll up, it would be the, the first one, not the second one. Does that make sense?
This is where Frank knows, Frank and Bart both know far more than me. So Frank's gonna get up and speak to that. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Frank Pol, county engineer. So I don't have it in front of me, but from my recollection, there's not an as-built fee, fee for V E S C P, only for V S M P.
Oh, I think, I'm sorry if I misspoke my, E S M P. That's what it says in here.
You, uh, went out what you're.
I'm going back into this document here. Second, just make sure I'm looking at the right one.
Step to project it.
Attachment B.
That you can project attachment B perhaps.
Yeah, attachment B.
That everyone can see.
It's like the last page actually of attachment B.
Mr. Murray, do you know what page that is on the attachment?
Yeah, I should believe it's fifteen.
Um, we can look at it, but I think the answer was, uh, and I agree with Amelia that we, for both uh, V E S C P and V S M P, that the fee is the same. So if there is a mitigation plan, it's just a mitigation plan, which is a general fee, which isn't specific to a V S M P or V E S C P. But we can, I can look at this, uh, in more detail tomorrow or later in the week and, and make any corrections if we need to before we bring this to the board. The last page. It should be the last.
Last, last page.
There it is. Alright, so, so if you look on there, you see the, um, the third item from the bottom, um, review of mitigation plan pertaining to land disturbing activity in a stream buffer. Uh, there was a fee of a hundred and seventy dollars to be proposed to, um, be rolled up into the, the general review. Um, whereas construction record drawings review was, was not rolled up. Um, so I was just curious, it seems more like you'd wanna roll up the first one into the general fee. Whereas, um, the thing we're trying to discourage, which is disturbing activities within a stream buffer is something we might wanna keep as a separate fee.
Sure, we can look at that. I didn't see this as, uh, discouraging or promoting any kind of activity necessarily. So we can look at that.
Because one of the best practices that we're trying to do here is to reduce the number of separate categories. So where you have the same fee for the same activity, we were trying to roll it up consolidated.
Well, but in that case, it is a, a different activity. I didn't see a duplicate of that on the other side that was, unless I missed it.
A duplicate of the construction record drawings review?
Oh, no, I mean a duplicate of, um, the mitigation of land disturbing activities in a stream buffer. So I didn't see where that was a duplicate thing. It was rolling it up into a single, like duplicate item. I was just rolling it up into the, into the general fee.
Mr. Murray, are you talking about number five that is crossed out? That is review of a mitigation plan under, under V S M P?
Um, yes.
Okay, that does exist. Let me.
Can we see the final?
That is on.
Possibly.
And I, I will find it. Okay, go two pages before that. And it is one, two, three, four, six, seven. Yeah.
Let me see if I'm.
There it is.
Actually.
Can you highlight that? I guess not. Yeah. Do, do you see where the cursor is kinda highlighted?
I do see that. Okay. All right. My, my bad. My eyesight's not great.
All right. Thank you. So I think we have two more questions. It's Commissioner Missile and then Commissioner Bivens. I believe we wrap up. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I'm getting into weeds here, but I'll make it a quick, uh, on the, um, proposed unified fee schedule, just thinking about how, um, order supervisor members might view this. You have the proposed unified fee schedule and you have the fee schedule crosswalk. I love that term crosswalk, but I never, never heard that. An actual crosswalk. It's hard to pick out what stays and what goes and what's, you know? Um, and I know you wrestled with this probably from a clarity standpoint. But I was looking, um, as a hypothetical applicant, for example, on a special use permit. And I saw that there's a special use permit for each resubmital after the first of five hundred and ninety dollars. But I didn't see that in the fee schedule crosswalk. Maybe I, so I don't wanna get into too much detail here and it's just that it seems to me resubmittals. And there's a few in there. There's the zoning map amendment, resubmital of fourteen hundred eighty bucks. There's the special use permit resubmital. There's a signage A R B resubmital. I don't remember seeing those. Maybe they were there and I just missed them. But the resubmital piece, again, thinking as a hypothetical applicant, applicant doesn't necessarily result as, uh, in, in all, always because the applicant wasn't complete in their submission. Sometimes it's out of the applicant's control. And so you're paying as an applicant for a resubmital that may or may not actually result in changes to that plan. So just, uh, something to think about is in terms of how that plays out.
I appreciate your point and I think we have really struggled with the proposed unified schedule and the crosswalk to make it clear to follow and it's still not easy to follow.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll keep looking at that. Um, and, uh, you know, those resubmital fees exist now. And, and staff I think uses good common sense of how to apply them. And I would trust that would happen in the future. But I, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, it just feels a little subjective, but I, I get it. And maybe there's a way to highlight those in the proposed unified fee schedule that makes it clear that they're different and new. I don't. Thank you.
Just, just an, an idea as you're thinking through the, um, the incentives for affordable housing. So we know we have seen projects come before us that don't use the intended density for a project in the development area. They come woefully short. And I think your colleagues have said something in the, in the fifties area that, that, that they're below that. And so if, if we look at the package of fees that we sort of incentivize someone to A, build to density and to also stay within the development area using our fee package, using the various levels that we, levers that we have may have before us. That also may be something that I, that I recommend you give some consideration to, so that we are in fact, we're encouraging developers to to use the piece of property that they're, that they're bringing before us in a way that helps them both fee wise, but also helps us with the dent, the density that the county has set forth on that piece of property.
Very good. Well, I hope the comments and discussion were helpful. Uh, first and foremost, great job on the presentation and, and know that we understand it's the iterative process. That's what design is, right? And so each time it gets better, uh, as it comes before us. So with that, thank you and look forward to seeing you. I guess it was in the fall or early winter. I think is what I saw.
For this project, we're, we're looking for fall, uh, public hearings with you guys and then winter for the, for the board. Yep. So thank you again very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. All right. After that robust discussion, we're gonna head into our, our public hearing, which is Z M A twenty twenty three, zero, 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 three, Maple Grove Church Residential. And with that, I will ask for the staff's report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sid Shof. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division of Albemarle County's Community Development Department. Sitting next to me is Rebecca Ragseal, Planning Manager. Um tonight, I'll be giving staff's presentation on zoning map amendment application, Z M A twenty twenty-three dash three. Maple Grove Church Residential Zoning Map Amendment. This is a proposed rezoning of a zero point three two acre lot from R one residential to R four residential. The subject property of this rezoning application is located north of the city of Charlottesville, near the Charlottesville Albemarle Airport. It is located off of Prophet Road east of U S twenty-nine North. There are three addresses associated with this parcel. There are three two zero eight, three two ten, and three two twelve Prophet Road. The tax map parcel is thirty-two dash twenty-nine D and the entire parcel is approximately six point eight six acres. It contains an existing one-story, single-family dwelling unit and an existing eighteen thousand square foot church that is used by Maple Grove Christian Church. Additionally, there are two playgrounds, a basketball court, a youth center building in the rear and existing parking areas. The specific area I'll be discussing today is highlighted in red and that is three two zero eight Prophet Road, which is zero point three two acres. And this area contains the existing one-story, single-family dwelling unit. As I mentioned before, this property is zone R one residential and is shown as light green on this map. A majority of the surrounding properties are single-family residential uses. To the west is Lighthouse Christian Church and preschool, Bright Beginnings preschool, and a variety of commercial uses along twenty-nine North. To the east is mostly residential with some rural areas uses to the northeast. The applicant's request is to rezone the highlighted red zero point three two acres of this property from R one residential to R four residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone zero point three two acres of the property from R one residential to R four residential. To allow a creation of a new zero point three two acre lot, which would contain the existing single-family dwelling unit. The church building, the parking areas, playgrounds, basketball court, and the youth center will remain outside of the proposed rezoning area and on its own parcel. The minimum lot size for conventional development in the R one zoning district is forty-five thousand square feet. So rezoning to a higher density zoning district is necessary to allow the creation of the proposed residential lot. The minimum lot size for conventional development in the R four zoning district is ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet. Given the proposed lot size of thirteen thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-two square feet, only one dwelling unit would be permitted on this proposed lot. The illustration shows a proposed subdivision plat if the rezoning were to be approved. The subdivision would be reviewed by staff to ensure that it follows all of Albemarle County's zoning regulations. Now moving on to the comprehensive plan, this subject property is located within the community of Hollymead in the place's twenty-nine master plan. The future land use is designated as urban density residential, which calls for residential uses at a density of six point zero one. To thirty-four dwelling units per acre. Although the proposed rezoning suggests a density of one dwelling unit per acre, staff believes this is appropriate, given the existing density of the surrounding neighborhood area. So in sum, there are two factors that are favorable. One, the request will have no impacts on neighboring properties, public facilities, and services. The second, the request is consistent with the county's growth management policy and the recommendations in the place's twenty-nine master plan. For factors unfavorable, we found none. The staff recommends approval of zoning map amendment request, Z M A twenty twenty-three dash three Maple Grove Church Residential rezoning. With that being said, I would like to open up this floor um for any questions from the planning commission.
Yeah, thank you. That was that was very efficient. Thank you. Looking to my left, starting with Commissioner Vivens and I'm working way around the horn. Any questions for staff?
Thank you, Chair. So if I understand it correctly, if we agree to this and it goes forward to supervisors and they agree. If this were to be redeveloped, there would only be the ability to put four structures, four dwellings on it.
You know, based on, I think we included in the report, based on the the lot size, um there would only be one dwelling unit that's permitted.
Even if it's an R four.
So good confirming question. Commissioner Carizano, anything?
I yeah, just again, just for confirming. So the highlight area was point three two acres.
Correct, zero point three two acres.
I didn't get the the. You you mentioned point one three. For the new development?
No, it's uh zero point three two acres. So they requesting to rezone zero point three two acres of the subject parcel and then. They would submit an application, a subdivision plat application if the rezoning were to be approved. And that would be that zero point three two acres to subdivide that land. To to construct one dwelling unit.
Construct one and and the.
Well, there is an existing of dwelling unit there.
And the minimum for R four would be point. Point one, right? Um that we stated.
Go back to my notes here.
Ten thousand eight hundred ninety.
Is the actual ten thousand square footage.
Yeah, that's correct. The minimum lot size for conventional development in the R four zoning district is ten thousand eight hundred ninety square feet. For R one zoning district, it's forty-five thousand square feet. So this parcel that they're proposing this up to rezone, yes, it's thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-two square feet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Missile?
No, sir, no questions.
Commissioner Firehawk?
And just a quick question. I'm just curious about the history of this site. Is is this house like leftover because it was the minister's house for the church or something like that? But they're they're not using it as that or the rectory or whatever anymore?
Yeah, the applicant is here today to um provide a presentation as well, but there is an existing parsonage on that property right now.
So they're just they're just disposing of a piece of their real estate they don't really need and possibly providing much needed funding for the church.
I would let the applicant.
That's fine.
All of all of that. Yeah, I think what you would anticipate seeing are evaluation of our facilities. Just like anyone would do business or government is just um. Not a priority to maintain that facility, but we do believe it would be a good residence for for the community. So it's reallocation of resources and that does uh. Match with our mission. We were recently approved for a daycare special use permit. So really what we'd like to focus on is uh the parsonage just uh doesn't fit into that plan.
Sir, I'll I'll be coming to you very soon for the, I'm sorry, I'll be coming to you very soon after we wrap up here. I'll be coming your way for the presentation so we can open a public hearing. It's okay. Um Commissioner Murray? All right, with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. There you go. It was just a split second too soon. That's all. That's all. Come on up. Um so there's no presentation by applicant. Is that correct?
Um this slide on the screen is what the applicant provided to me. So if you would like to speak.
Kind of told us.
And do please share your name.
Je- Jeffrey Ainge Maple Grove Christian Church. Yep, so we're here to uh hopefully present a quality application. For a zoning map amendment. And uh we do appreciate the committee's help from the very beginning in the pre-app stages. We felt like. We received a lot of good advice, as was the case in our daycare center application. So we felt like uh the whole goal of our committee. Your committee was to was to present a quality solution and a quality product. So uh we we feel like we had that here. We addressed early that we should look at setbacks. We should look at public walks. We should look at. Things that would just properly accommodate the residents, but also uh the playgrounds and adjacent housing. And would uh that's where the whole recommendation to go to a R four zoning came about. Cause uh the squeezing in a larger lot was just going to crowd uh the lot up on top of everything else. Other other than that, that's uh how we got to where we are today and and uh. We're just hoping it's a good solution.
All right, thank you. Uh I'll see if there's any questions for you, sir. Commissioner Murray, any questions for applicant? Let's work way around.
I had mine.
You had yours. Commissioner Missile?
No, sir.
Right, Commissioner Vivens. I'll come back to Commissioner Carizano.
I I have an observation, Chair. That's. Um and so as a as something to give consideration for, I know the church is going to do this, but having had. Decades of work in this area. Um one of the things that that both communities are finding difficult today is that if they bring someone who's new to the who's a new minister. In this particular area, they can't afford to buy a house or rent a house. And so you're going to do what you're going to do, obviously, but that that becomes. Um a hurdle for someone to consider coming to your parish.
It's it it is a consideration and it has been a consideration. I think that just for us. It's been the history of of our usage. Yeah, so. It's it's just time to to change gears. Thank you.
Of course, Commissioner Carizano, you have any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir. Um is there anyone uh signed up to speak, Mr. Clerk? Anyone here who would like to speak who did not sign up? All right, Mr. Clerk, is anyone online who would like to speak? All right. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh Commission, I'll bring it into us and uh I'll start with Commissioner Vivens. If you have anything, would you like to add for discussion and we will work our way around the horn?
No, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um the only thing that I had a consideration was, but I think it's, I think they'll work that out. When they have to come and work with staff more is that that entrance, how do you manage an entrance that's both a a um. A a secular and a sacred in sense on a road that if if you have not been on that road recently. I would encourage all of you um to look at the community that's right next to it. And how and the density that's there, which is good. There's not me complaining, and the community across the street from it, which has got density. And the community right next to the older church which is out there. So there there it's not like it was. When people were wondering what was going to happen in that in that portion of Prophet Road there. So um I I'm I'm supportive of this, but just to be aware that the traffic levels are significantly different than they have been in even five years.
Very fair statement. Commissioner Carizano? Commissioner Missile?
No, sir, I'll say.
All right, to this end, Commissioner Firehawk?
No, I don't have questions. It was a well-prepared application and easy to understand.
Very good. Commissioner Commissioner, no? All right. Are we prepared to make a motion?
I am. All right, I uh would like to move that the planning commission recommend approval of Z M A twenty twenty-three dash three Maple Grove Church. Residential for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Don't move. All right, the second. Second. Any further discuss uh discussion? All right, here and then, Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Missile? Aye. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carizano?
Aye.
Mr. Vivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion passes unanimously and you now will be preparing uh armed with what you hear today. Preparing for a presentation with the board of supervisors that the date to be determined. All right, pulling up my agenda.
Thank you.
So thank you. Uh committee reports. Does anyone have any? I'll start with. To this end of the dais, Commissioner Murray?
No, no, no reports, but um there will be a there will be a meeting um. This the C the Creze C I C, um but plus also other ones will be talking about the comprehensive plan. Uh they'll have a virtual meeting, so. Um that will be very interesting. I'll participate in that. I. Hope other people will as well.
Right, that's right. Keep us posted on how that goes. So Commissioner Firehawk?
Yep, I registered for that meeting as well, so I'll just be listening. Um and the uh historic preservation committee did not have a quorum, so we did not meet.
Here we go again.
Yeah, but but I'm ever hopeful for the next one. Because we're right in the middle of developing those cool criteria for how we could nominate more county-specific markers uh to under-recognize communities.
You 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 know, we do have something like that because I I was at um. I was at first, I was, where was I? I was at Ivy Creek. For us for a talk, Ivy Creek Nature Area.
Oh, Ivy Creek.
And that whole area around there was the. Rio Mills, well, the Albemarle Training School was there. And there is a black, much like the one that's out like uh that's out. Outside of here.
Yeah.
There are there are black with gold letters as opposed to white with black.
Yeah, they kind of got a greenish background. Yeah, they look distinct from the the white and black old-timey state markers.
Right, so those.
And the best part is we get to write that.
Right, so we can do it. You just have to.
Well, we'll we'll find out when we have the next historic preservation. Anyway.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Missile, do you have a report?
No, sir, I do not.
All right, Commissioner Carizano? Do not. All right, Commissioner Vivin?
I have a question for Commissioner Carizano. So I saw I saw I saw a quote by one of your colleagues from the N P O tech. That the roundabout a district avenue, which was interesting since it was a person from the city of Charlottesville who is being quoted. Uh I will reserve comment on that. Um uh that the roundabout a district avenue has made the smart scale. Has made smart scale. That's not how it's said, has been accepted by smart scale or whatever they do to get a smart scale acceptance. And I was just wondering if you'd heard that at the last N P O tech meeting.
I do not recall. We reviewed the smart scale uh projects. I don't remember seeing that one on maybe. Mrs. McDermott can help me out.
Yes, I can respond to that. Thank you, Kevin McDermott, um the acting planning director. Uh the Commonwealth Transportation Board in reviewing the submitted projects. Uh decided to change the award from the um. From the staff recommended scenario, which had uh Almar County essentially had three projects that were recommended for funding through smart scale this year. They were um the intersection improvements at Belvedere and Rio. They were uh pedestrian and bike improvements on Avon that actually crossed from the in was in the city and the county. On Avon, including a new bridge over Moore's Creek pedestrian bridge. And the third project that was initially recommended was improvements at Peter Jefferson Parkway on in two fifty. Uh which would have included a uh a uh park and ride lot. But when the C T B reviewed that, they decided to pull that project and move that money from there. Over to District Avenue and fund the roundabout. And so that was in the the final Commonwealth Transportation Board recommended funding scenario. Uh so it looks like.
That happened post our last, because the three projects you mentioned are the three that we reviewed.
Were the three that were initially submitted. And then my understanding is, and I I actually hadn't heard that confirmation until. Commissioner Vivin said it, but I knew that the C T B was gonna recommend that change. And so that's that's my understanding is that they wanted to, because of the existing projects at hydraulic and twenty-nine. They thought it was more effective to correct, to do that roundabout a district avenue uh in concert with those. With that other project, so they moved it.
Mr. McDermott, so did you say that smart scale did accept those or those are being submitted to smart scale?
Those are the ones that it's my understanding, those are the ones that were awarded for funding in smart scale.
And that takes about, is it is it ten years cradle to grave roughly?
Uh it it's dependent. It's uh four years before the funding starts and then. Uh once that funding starts, it'll go through the phases, which could last three, usually about three years. So I'd say about seven years.
Okay, that's right. Um I was like, there's no other report, so we'll kick it back to you for AC forty-four update.
Uh I'm I'm gonna keep this brief this time um for a couple of reasons. One, we gave a a fairly robust. Uh updated at last meeting and not much has happened since then. Uh we are preparing for this meeting that Commissioner Murray. Mentioned um a pub online public uh virtual meeting. Um and I I encourage you all to listen in. I think it's gonna be really informative. Uh and then that'll be our final. Uh public engagement effort for this uh part two. Uh, public engagement effort for this, uh, part two of, uh, phase two. Um, where we're going over those, uh, the growth management and planning toolkits. Uh, we will be coming back to you, not, not for one meeting, but two, uh, including one. At the, our next meeting in July, we will give a, a, a small update on the process. And talk more about the timeline come from here going forward. And then we will be back in, at the August eighth meeting. With, um, a, a full, or I'm sorry, yeah, no, that's right, August eighth. Um, with the full update on, uh, all of our planning toolkits. And that's going to be the full. Uh, you know, full meeting, nothing else on the agenda that night. So we'll be taking a few hours to go over that with the consultants. And, and have a really thorough, in-depth work session with you all. So that's where we are.
Sounds good. And, and food on the eighth, right?
I'm, I'm working on that.
All right, all right, all right. Just gonna put it out there for the record. Um. Gotta keep it light.
Do you want us to sort of vote on that, Chair?
Can't be famished and working. Um.
That still starts at six, right?
It, that's, that's gonna be a follow-up because our calendar invitations still say four o'clock. Um, so we just have an updated calendar invite.
Uh, yes, I'll work on that. I apologize. Our clerk, our, our regular clerk had sent those out and we've had trouble getting those, uh, changed. But I, I will take care of that.
Can I make my point of, sir? So for whatever reason, not only do I still have the. Four o'clock's on my calendar. I think most of us do. But I also, like, for this meeting, I have a cancellation of my calendar. So, um, and it may just be my calendars, but I wonder if it just can, if, make sure that they can align my calendar with the new schedule. It doesn't seem to be right now, both the four o'clock meetings and I have some cancellations, which, never mind.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and lastly, on a dock, any items or follow-up? Or Commissioner Bibbin says a question.
So this is my perpetual question. And I'm so glad that the director of zoning is here. So in our ordinances, we have nothing that sort of states that there are any viewses of any particular houses. Which have to be protected. I believe I've been told that number of times. And so if that is an accurate statement, then I would request. That there be some consideration that when we look at view, when they look at view sheds. That it says, that it says that the Monticello view shed is not impacted. Since there's no Monticello view shed in our ordinance, what there is is a suggestion that. That developers speak to Monticello and have a discussion with Monticello. But there is no way that Monticello can enforce the building or the not building of a particular project. If somehow or another they can see it from that hill. And so since it's not in our ordinances, I would like to have it struck from the staff report. Because it still gives the impression when someone looks at that staff report that there is some sort of, um. How do I put this? Oversight from the hill.
The staff want to respond or are we okay?
Uh, we'll, we'll look into that and, and get back to you.
Right.
It probably requires more discussion.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn until July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Now that you're saying, I'll some more. So moved.
All right. Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Anyone want to change their vote? All right. Hearing that, meeting is adjourned.